Time being seven o'clock, I'll call the August ninth, 2021 meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. First on the agenda, plan's not requiring subdivision approval, we have none. Want to wait the five minutes? I don't have it.
Last correspondence I had, he was going to be here tonight.
Okay, we'll wait five minutes. We'll go down, what can you do in five minutes, Tony? It's all yours, whatever you could do.
I'm debating whether I should start.
You can introduce Patrick to us, I don't think everybody met Patrick, have they?
Absolutely, absolutely. Let's say a few words.
Sure, my name is Patrick Dolegrin and I am the new building commissioner here for the town of Oxford.
Welcome, welcome. It only took thirty seconds, but you got four and a half minutes of stuff to say, right?
I will note, and it all lines up. We did receive a memo from the town manager's office that the special town meeting will be Wednesday, October 6th at 7:00 PM. And it'll be held at the, at the high school. And notes here, as the date approaches, a determination will be made as to the specific location at the high school. Additionally, the selectmen voted to open the warrant effective August 4th, 2021. And they will close the warrant on September 8th, 2021. And so later tonight, or in a short time from now, and following from the last meeting, I do have just some, some items, an item for consideration as we discussed at the last meeting with respect to the overlay. The marijuana overlay district. And also, our building commissioner would also like to, for your consideration, some amendments, an amendment with respect to blight.
All right, you got anything else, Tony, miscellaneous?
I will also share that on Wednesday, and I will send an email over to everyone, but the Wednesday, I believe at 11:00. But again, I will send an email over. The East Coast.
East Coast Metal Roofing is opening their facility on Sutton Avenue in Oxford. They're having a get together.
Yes, so all invited to, to attend.
They're gonna have refreshments and whatnot.
And hopefully there'll be more to come, too. TC Controls is near completion as well. I mentioned at the last, no, two meetings prior. El Patron, they've received their, their state alcohol license about a week or two ago. And I think they're submitting their final for a 110 inspection.
Where were they going?
Where the Ox Bar and Grill.
Oh, okay, what's the name of the company?
El Patron.
What is it, a restaurant?
Mexican restaurant.
Good.
Yes.
I think they have a place where in Northborough?
Yes, yes, and also in Worcester as well, not too far from, from the ballpark. So that'll be very exciting also.
So Tony, just before that, you mentioned another, was it TC?
TC Controls, they, they are over on Lester and 50th Street.
Yeah, the grass is growing.
Yes, it's taking, it's taking. So they, they should be near completion for final occupancy.
Good.
So it's a very positive, they too came from Worcester as well, relocated here.
Very good.
Much like El Patron, if you will, although they're expanding, so, El Patron, so that's, that's exciting also.
Are they gonna have an abandoned opening?
TC Controls?
No, the other, El Patron. Hopefully we're invited to that.
We'll see.
You get from a roofing company, but Mexican restaurants.
Well, thank you, Tony, for filling in that five minutes, excellent.
That's a piece of the report, so.
Very good, we'll get back to you in a second. The time being 7:05 PM, we have a continued public hearing. Seven Founders Court, application for stormwater management and land disturbance permits. Applicant owner Ronald Caldwell Jr. They leveled out their backyard to create usable yard space and they installed a, installation of a controlled slope with clean fill and reinforced turf. Everyone received pictures in there showing water runoff and some silt runoff from the controlled slope. There are issues, we've had a lot of rain in the last month, so they should have seen some issues. Anyway, they don't have a plan, they never presented anything. I don't see they came in even to, this is the date they requested and they're not here.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the applicant, the applicant's engineer is, is working with DPW. And, and you are absolutely correct, nothing has been submitted to us, although I believe there's been, I know there's been some, some analysis reports submitted to the, to our DPW director for his review, but without any further plans submitted here, we would recommend that we continue this item.
Okay, and that's the neighbor that's been taking all these pictures, correct? So he wants a resolution to the problems that he's seeing.
Yes, yes, and these photos, and there was, I believe, a video as well, was shared with, with both the DPW and the applicant's engineer to, to rectify.
Okay. All right, well, I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to August?
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third at? 7:05 PM, okay. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Roger, further discussion? Be and none, all those voting in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Okay.
Oh, can we change the time on that because I think the twenty-third, we have?
There is another one that I saw them to pay for the other day.
The 275 Main Street?
Bed and breakfast.
Right, that's at 7:05, right?
Oh, okay, okay. Could we amend that motion, Norman, to something?
I will, I will.
Seven-ten?
I will amend my motion to seven-ten.
Chances are there won't be a plan, I'm kinda thinking, so. We'll see, we may have to get an extension from them. It's true. And from the town's point of view, what are we gonna do if they never produce the so-called plan? I know we.
Yes, I, I'll follow up with Jared, our DPW director.
That's the same thing as, what, 608, okay? They, they've never put the detention basin back into the ground, so.
Yes, no, yes. But I can say, spoke to Jared today, DPW director, and they have hired, they do have an engineer.
Do they?
Founders Court, yes, they do, they do.
Okay, yeah, you did say that, but I mean, yeah, okay.
And we're expecting, we are expecting a plan shortly.
Right.
Certainly, if there was a plan submitted tonight, even so, at this late hour, even if a plan was presented tonight, we would still recommend that we continue, so we still have a chance to look at and review. Mr. Chairman, if I may though, too, I would like to share also a communication that we received from DPW with respect to 608 Main, something.
Yeah, no, we got that in the package, I'm well aware that he gave them an ultimatum.
Yes.
I'd hate to see the town have to go fix their screw-up. I mean, they got the plan in place, that what they're supposed to have there.
Yes, and so failure to perform remediation under Chapter 67 does allow the town, at its option, to, to make the repair and charge the property owner for all costs incurred.
Okay.
As stated in the letter.
Start getting your estimates. That's what it looks like, anyway. Okay, Roger, do you accept that seven-ten change of time on that continuation of the public hearing? Okay, okay, we'll revote. All those voting in favor of that, say?
Aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Okay, the time, well, we're fighting the clock. Usually we got five minutes behind that. Well, do we even have to wait, because we don't have a quorum anyway? The next one that's supposed to occur at 7:15 is a continued public hearing on Four Pioneer Drive for the marijuana cultivation facility. We do not have a quorum for the special permit, because only four of us here again. So the applicant has been notified, that's why they're not here, so. Entertain a motion to continue that to the 23rd of August at?
Seven fifteen?
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen PM.
Make that a motion.
Roger makes the motion. Seconded by Christine. Further discussion? Be and none, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Tony, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. So for tonight, and following the agenda here, under new business marijuana overlay district proposed zoning bylaw amendment, for your consideration, I've been looking at this overlay district for, for some time and like to run through some ideas if, if the board is willing to, to consider. Now, for purposes of tonight, if there were to be any action tonight, would be a, a communication to, to the Board of Selectmen as, as is past, requesting that this item come before the planning board for, for a public hearing. And then ultimately, after public hearing, referred back to Board of Selectmen to, to get on for the special town meeting, yes. Let me just provide some, some overview here, some context of, of what you see here on the screen. And also, this is just a, an illustration, and although, and I'll explain what's being highlighted here, they're not actual, at this moment being proposed as, as an extension, and I'll explain a little bit, particularly in this parcel here. I'll explain the, the reasoning and how we kinda, how we've kinda get into this. What is in blue is a depiction of the current overlay district along Route 20. And you'll see this goes out approximately, it comes out 500 feet on both sides, terminates right at 56. And please note that this is not to, not to scale, it's not a surveyed. There's just a few layers I've put together and some tracing along here. But I'm just calling out this parcel down here for, for one reason. And to give some context, too. You'll see in other parts of this overlay, where it goes out 500 feet, it does cross or does split parcels. Now, under, including this parcel here, of course, and frankly, almost all of the parcels, there's some, some splitting that occurs.
Yeah, yeah.
And under, under our overlay ordinance, Chapter 2, 2.3, any questions relative to, to boundary, an applicant may petition the board that the smaller, if you will, of the, of the two boundaries through a special permit would, would apply. Using that, you know, we run into scenarios where in, it's a possibility that, for example, this parcel through petition of the planning board could, the overlay could, could expand, if you will. One thing to note here, along Pioneer Drive, all of the parcels appear to, to, to fall within the, the overlay. May just be a sliver like here. I will note this is BVO's parcel. This one here is Seven Pioneer Drive. And I highlight this one because there is sort of a fine, literally a fine line as to whether that's in or out of the overlay. One possible consideration here to kind of clear this up is perhaps simply extending this lower portion of the 500 feet all along through here. Perhaps another 50 feet. And I say 50 feet, whereas this measurement from this point to this point is about 110 feet or so. And if we extend another 50 feet, you will still capture the existing parcels, but without question, this parcel would clearly fall into, to the overlay. And once again, applicant would have to go and petition this, this board for special permit. Of course, the, the overlay itself, the application also requires special permit site plan review. And certainly host commune agreement is required prior to them submitting for site plan special permit. So that's, want just to call that out. The actual, another area, pardon me, of expansion, if you will, is this area that you see in this blue. So extending the overlay out into, this is at the corner of Route 20 and Route 56, former bank building. Same thing here, extending this out to this property, this parcel, and this back parcel. This back parcel is approximately about three acres, three and a half acres. This tiny parcel is actually town-owned. And this parcel that is currently a residential parcel here, there will be some widening on this part of the Route 20 project, both at this corner and this corner as well, right over here. This back parcel is about an acre, a little over an acre, for reference. Similar size here. So, again, clarifying Pioneer Drive, so it's as definitive as we can be, that all the parcels along Pioneer Drive, which is an industrial area, would be eligible through the special permit to be considered in the overlay. And expanding this area here to fall within the, the overlay. Pioneer Drive is this, again, this parcel is for sale or leased. Same thing with this parcel back here, or up here, I should say. That's all that I, that I have tonight, and this, like I said, we can, for the board's consideration, as this moves forward, we, we can further define, expand, adjust, modify, as the board recommends, so.
Okay, I have no problem opening it up from 500 to 550 feet. That's not an issue, I mean, we, we just pick round numbers on this board when we put in that overlay district to begin with. And like you said, the, the small portion can dictate the entire parcel with the planning board's approval. As, as far as going to the other side of 56, yeah, but I, I don't think you should just pick parcels, I mean, you could get in trouble with spot zoning. I'd just prefer you extend the, instead of using 56, you use the French River and stop there, that type of thing. And the same thing would apply to that backland behind all those residences, it would be, a portion of the lot would be in that district, follow what I'm saying? Almost all of it, quite frankly, but you're gonna have to take those, you're gonna have to place those residents in it, too, you can't just work around them. I'm very, I'm very privy to spot zoning, you're trying, trying to, trying to nail it down to one particular parcel of land. And to me, that's spot zoning, I mean, usually zoning should be, you know?
Sure, so, an important consideration here, always in, in the context, this, and therefore, that's, that's why it's always recommended to add more than just one parcel. To avoid any, any perception of that.
I'm just saying, instead of 56 being the delineation, you go to the French River. That'll cover the entire bank, okay? And it'll, it'll bring it down right there and cover that entire parcel in the, in the back there. Most of it, anyway.
Yeah.
Enough of that lot so that they could conceivably do that.
What's the zoning for that, the easternmost parcel there? Yeah, that one.
Is that part of the North Oxford Business District, Overlay District? Is that, that overlay still in play, too? We had one.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that's just general business.
I believe that's, pardon me for one second, let me just pull up property card. General business.
General business.
And there's no expected land taking or anything when they widen that part of Lester Street? That residence is still gonna remain a residence?
There is some taking along here, some widening, but the, the structure will remain. The structure will remain.
Yeah.
And that's still a residence, isn't it?
Correct.
Currently vacant, I don't believe that there's anybody living there.
Well, I mean, that, you know, I don't mind opening up the zoning in that area, okay? At one point, someone was talking about marijuana facility on Sutton Avenue, okay? I thought you were talking up there, but this is just adjacent to that district, anyway. You know, the district, that, that overlay map, I, I mean, we picked 56 because that was the easiest thing to do.
Absolutely.
I really wanted to get someone to tear down the old Chinese restaurant that's beyond Pioneer Park and put something up there, you know? That was my one goal when we decided this area would be good for it, because it's, it's, it's directly away from most residents and, and schools and that. The trouble with that bank is it's adjacent to residents. But hey, let's face it, so is the one down here on Main Street. You know what I mean, so I, you can't, I don't, I don't put a lot of credence in that, and we were kind of forced into that one, okay?
And, and again, and pardon me for, for being repetitive, it's still special permit, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I agree with that.
It still requires host commune agreement and stuff.
So as far as, as far as ease of doing it, you just extend the, you know, and go, go 550 on each side of the road, who cares? You know, for an additional 50 feet, if you think that covers that one particular lot on, that's for sale and, in, within Pioneer Park, I have no problem doing that. I mean, we just, we just rounded it up to 500 feet. Could have been 600 feet, you know?
Certainly, and there's no, there's no science to it.
There isn't a science to it.
It's really an art.
It's the only reason it was done. And it just so happens to, for, for Pioneer Drive, all right, they wanna put one up in there, okay? That's a good, like I said, I thought they were gonna tear down the Chinese restaurant on a little further, further west and right on the same side as Pioneer Park and build something there.
Absolutely, they still could.
They still could, but up to the quantity that we allow of things, and we put a limit in there, right? In, in the marijuana.
A limit for retail?
Retail?
Yes.
I take it that's what's going in the bank, would be a retail.
It would seem to make sense, given the location, the traffic counts.
Yeah, yeah, that isn't, that isn't big enough to have any type of cultivation purpose, or manufacturing facility.
Now, this area, Abutting Texas Pond rezoned GB years back. I know that there's, we know that there's also residential across the street from there.
Oh, yeah, we, we've, we had a discussion with the neighbors, they were concerned. But we told them, any businesses that are in there have to be small and they have, they can't be high, okay? Because the land drops off dramatically on that side of the street. And they, they have to deal with the floodplain, and that takes away a lot of the land on that side. But hey, the, the landowner requested it from us to go general business, so. Who we say, we got one business in there, that's from there.
Yeah, and as the years have gone by, too, we're still waiting to hear with respect to Mass Works grant, the sewer extension, but that would bring it down to Pioneer Drive.
Yeah.
And, and Lester Street, I believe sewer was, was added right, too long ago. So it, I think those, those will, would be beneficial as well. Indeed, we could have other overlays, and technically, this, this map, although I don't have it picked out, but there is the other parcel for the document.
We'd be having a different discussion if you were talking about Sutton Avenue, I gotta tell you that. I have no problem extending the, that portion of the overlay district.
And, and no intention whatsoever.
And if that's, if that's where someone is expressing interest, okay, you know?
And again, I mean, this, this is a standalone, this, the intention here is just to depict that on the boundary here, this one is left out.
Yeah, it's right on, and it may not qualify, there may not be enough of that lot in to qualify, I don't know.
But no intention to, to spot zone, really, the, the goal is whenever we're, we're looking at zoning is, is to always add more than one, would be the simple solution, than to, to call out a single parcel. I just called out that one in the beginning and addressed it first, just to talk about, you know, for the, for everyone's benefit, the public's benefit, too, how that works out. So that's, that's all that I had on this piece.
Okay.
Can I add one thing, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong? The corner parcel across the street from the former bank, which was 139, is 139 South Bridge Road.
Yes.
I believe that building is going to be demolished as part of the Route 20 re.
Yeah, it's gonna be where they turn around.
And that building was considered at one point for a marijuana business.
Yeah, 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 it made sense, that's, that was, that was another reason why we went up there. We went to the North Oxford area like that, there was a lot of lighted buildings.
And there's still development opportunity here, because as Mary pointed out, this piece here would become the, the turnaround point, right?
There's a lot of packing that could be happening.
There's a tremendous, yes.
That could be, that could be some sort of manufacturing facility.
About an acre or so remaining. But still the same considerations, as, should we get applicants in the future on cultivation, retail, and so on? But think about cultivation, like the other applicant before us, order control is very important, something.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Again, and we've worked that into our host commune agreement, too, for that project, so. None of that would, would change to ensure that there's safeguards in place.
Yeah, no, if you want to doctor up that, that zone and we can go ahead and put it on the warrant, I have no problem with that.
And so what I will do for the next meeting, whoops, just for the, the visual purpose, I'm, I'm happy to, to revise this. And just so we can all see it again to visualize it. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members.
All right, any questions? Okay, next.
Now I will defer to Patrick.
Okay, Patrick.
Good evening, again, my name is Patrick Dolegrin and I am the building commissioner here in the town of Oxford. Chairman and members, thank you for the opportunity. I'm here to propose possibly two amendments to, to, for your consideration to the zoning and/or the general bylaw. So, to, for, in the general bylaw, right now, in Chapter 76, we'll do this first. Kind of hand in hand, the two, two considerations I'm asking for is, Chapter 76 is, is the registration and maintenance of vacant and foreclosed properties. So right now, this chapter exists, it's, it's a pretty good chapter in the way it's written, it is missing a couple definitions. That's, that's the biggest downfall. It also, it really should be reworked to include property maintenance. So we just have foreclosed property and vacant properties, what about existing properties, properties that are, that are occupied? That may have some, some, we call blight or a nuisance. So the two definitions that I'm trying to add into this chapter is, is the word, first of all nuisance, and then the second word would be blight, as two definitions. And I'll come up with. And I'll come up with some, some language for those two
Okay.
two definitions to add.
Makes sense.
The plan is, is that, um, the chapter seventy-six, I'm gonna rewrite it. I'm gonna use a lot of the definitions that are existing and some of, some of the language in this chapter, but rewrite it to include, also include property maintenance. That's the first, first of the consideration. Second is in zoning. At one time, right now it's in chapter two, it's on the Use Regulations, uh, seven point zero, the storage of unregistered motor vehicles. At one point, this was actually in the general bylaws. In, in nineteen eighty-seven, it was moved to the zoning, into the general, the main zoning, um, book here. I'm proposing two things. At first I was thinking maybe we also put the two definition for blight and nuisance into the zoning, but it really has no place in zoning, nor does the storage of unregistered motor vehicles. The way this is worded, a resident or property owner can have two unregistered vehicles and it doesn't matter if it's in one piece or several pieces. So this has been in effect for about thirty-four years right now and it, and we can tell, I can tell. I've been here a little over about five weeks, almost six weeks now, and I'm doing my general inspections and all I have to do is just turn around and we have multiple vehicles on properties, blight and a nuisance, you know, vegetation. These are not abandoned properties, these people are living in these properties. And I don't want to say it's out of control, but you don't have to look far. I have a couple, couple pictures here and this is just over the five weeks, I'm not looking for this, it's just, it's just here.
Yep.
There's one, I'll just randomly pick a few. This is two commercial vehicles in a residential area, they are registered, but this would be considered a nuisance, not to if I'm the neighbor here, I have to look at these two commercial vehicles that are probably, um, at least maybe two ton every day. This is in a residential area, this would be considered a nuisance.
Do you think the neighbors know that that's considered a nuisance or?
Well, not yet. Will be.
Right.
I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of owner occupied businesses going on in town too. I see those through the, uh, you know, seeking approval.
And they're allowed to do twenty-five percent of their, you know, of, of their home to use as a home occupation.
What about the vehicle that is, that, uh?
Correct, I had, I had one today that was, he's a DJ and he's, he's asking for a home occupation and he says truck in the trailer, oh, I asked him what size is the truck and he told me it's a twenty-five hundred truck that pulls a little trailer. That's a, that's great, that's a big difference from a truck like this.
Yeah.
You know, a box truck or a loading, a loading van that's over, say, one ton, um, in a residential area. So this would be considered blight, you have a vehicle, parts of vehicles, trucks.
Patrick, with this cover, I, I, I've been contacted in the past by people down certain residential areas and the neighbor has a big, he's a, you know, he hauls big truck, trailer trucks. He parks the cab in his driveway and every morning at five o'clock, he starts the thing up and, and I, they say, what can we do, I just told him to see the building, this is before you.
Correct.
Apparently there's not much we can do right now, right?
It's very vague, very, very vague.
Yeah, so this would take care of that.
This, this would take care of stuff like this.
Cause that, I mean, yeah, that's.
This would be, this would be a fine and then a reoccurring fine. What I see in the past where, where, um, the previous building commissioner, he was part-time, he did a great job for the time that he had, Robert Lencioni Duffy. And some of these are his pitches too that he, he witnessed. And moving forward, we, we really need to, we really need to start to act on this. And, and the way to do it is to clarify, clarify the language in zoning and move some of this up to the general bylaws. Because we try to change the zoning, especially for the unregistered vehicles, someone could say, oh, his grandfather did. Well, I was allowed to do that before, now I'm not.
How would we enforce this, sorry, so we got, say, this particular person and you give them what, so much time to clean it up and if they don't, what happens?
So the first thing, it's actually in chapter, uh, seventy-six, the very end. It's called the twenty-one D, so it's a violation. You'd give them, first you can give them a letter written, written warning. So you have, you know, seven days, fourteen days to clean up, clean up the property or make an attempt to clean up the property, start the process. If they elect not to do that, you can send them a fine and then they have twenty-one days to either pay that or appeal it. And that can be up to three hundred dollars per day, per violation. So it can get pretty, it can get pretty steep for the property owner. Because right now there's nothing in here for the actual property maintenance. We do have stuff through the Board of Health, but it's, it's, you know, it's pretty spotty, pretty weak on that end of it. This will clarify property and, and blight here in the town.
I'm, I'm curious why, how that, how this ended up in, uh, in our bylaw. Not in the general bylaw.
At one time it was, I was trying to find out information why they moved it to zoning.
It's a mistake to put it in us, we don't, you know? We don't go chasing those type of people around, they, they, they're not coming looking for anything from us or any type of, uh, approval to do anything, that's why I don't think it belongs in there.
Yeah, what, what type of zoning would allow that?
I saw this one the other day, I got a call and on the side of the, side of the road, down, it's a private road, but it's still, people live on this road. This is, this is there, it's been, it's been there for quite a while, but nobody wants to complain.
Yeah.
They don't want to be that person, but if I see this, this is a violation. This has been tried, this has been attempted to be removed and they put all the trash around that area inside here and then they couldn't lift it with the machinery they had.
Like a fellow pot.
They just gave up and left it there. There's some more, and this is the same area.
Oh, this is all in Oxford, huh?
Correct.
Looks like a third world country.
Yeah, no, I hear you, it's I just assume get it back into general bylaws so that, uh,
Believe it or not, there's a vehicle behind this, there's a vehicle, you can see, this is, this is the bumper.
Oh, yeah.
It's a Ford Taurus.
Call American Pickers. Come clean that right out of there. Looks like four sixty-eight Main Street.
We got that, we found the owners and the responsible people for the bank, we were able to, to get them to, uh, to, you could call Landscape Company. So this property here, it's a residential house, it, it's fully, fully engulfed in, in weeds. The property to the right, which is be to my back, was for sale, it was a small little cape, beautiful, perfect for the town of Oxford, the actual, you know, stereotypical home, but I guess it sat there for a long time, they couldn't sell because of this property.
Because of that problem right next door.
Right next door.
Patrick, how do we deal with snowmobiles and boats and all stuff, old lawnmowers and stuff?
It would still be classified, yeah, it would be under very nuisance, so you would have a list, it would be included but not limited to.
Okay.
You'd have a list, and it would have the, the GVW of the vehicles, uh, trailers and, 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 you know, lawn furniture, everything like that, lawn, lawn equipment, it would all be part of, of that. Typically the Code Enforcement Office would be, myself, would be kind of the authority to say, hey, that's, this is, this is blight, this is a nuisance to the neighborhood. This one here is a, you know, vehicle unregistered, this vehicle, vehicle from the neighbor told me he's been there for many, many, many years. The vegetation's overgrown. So on this street, this is one violation, you, you look down the end of the street, there's another violation with some, you know, some, some multiple unregistered vehicles.
They need a new roof, too, Rich.
All it takes is one and they get away with it and others say I can do the same thing.
Here, so.
Yeah, look at that, we're all old campus.
Vehicle right here also. It, it's so bad that the, the vegetation's grown through it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's, it's not gonna be moved.
That's how long they've sat there. Well, I'd do anything to help you there, I'd like to see it in the general bylaw, so it's not, it's not a planning board issue. We don't, we don't issue blight and nuisance and all that other stuff.
So this one here is very close to, really very close to Town Hall.
Yeah.
It's actually behind Town Hall.
You could drive down Main Street right now and you'll see a sofa and you'll see a, a chair and it, and it's on town land. It's on that strip of land between, uh,
You know, people have to pay to get rid of that stuff.
Yeah, so they just leave it out.
So they just leave it out, hoping someone will take it for free.
Yeah, the town has to pay for it too.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean.
So I'm timing some of the stuff I see and see if it moves, this has been here for a while, you can see the debris and the dirt and the leaves behind it. It's been there for a while, so this would be a blight issue, it would be a nuisance, it'd be ticketed, probably with a door tag first, hey, you know, get rid of your trash.
Can you do that now, can you give them some kind of a?
Can give them, I can give them, you know, a warning, some type of warning now, um, and then, and then push it forward. I mean, you got propane tanks here, who knows if they're full. You know, this could be a fire department issue too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's, you don't have to go unfortunately very far, uh, is, is it really over, you know, you have, there's a few on every street, you have your issues. I'm not talking about the, the, you know, the car collector or, um, where they're building a muscle car and they have an unregistered, that's not the intent of this.
No, no, I, I know where you're coming from.
Yeah, but if you had like three or four cars sitting in the lot that weren't registered and like you said, overgrown.
Yep.
All taken apart.
I seen one, I don't have a picture of it here, it was, um, like a box truck, like a, uh, Amazon or UPS box truck. And I said, well, what are you guys gonna do with that? He goes, we are able to have one unregistered vehicle in the yard. I said, that's not a vehicle, that's a scrap metal now, we're gonna, we're gonna move it, we're gonna move it inside. That, that's what it comes down to, if they're allowed to have it. I searched some of the towns, local towns, everybody, all of those towns, they pretty much have, you can have one unregistered vehicle and it makes sense. The town of Auburn, none, zero, you cannot have any unregistered vehicles at all. It's not allowed, not allowed. So one I can, I can understand, you know, if you have kids, a kid you bought a vehicle for.
Is theirs in the general bylaw or theirs in?
General, the general bylaw.
Yeah, they gotta be general, I, I can't see why it moved to the planning board area of a bylaw.
I, I will say.
It wasn't here back then, so I don't know.
Well, you only been here thirty years, so I don't know where you were. But, but we, we have to bring this to town meeting, okay? And we're gonna have to, because the first thing you're gonna get is property rights, I got my rights in that. I think we gotta let people know, and, and I don't know if you legally can put these pictures up, but, but people gotta know that's what we're talking about, all right? Because I, we've gone through this before with certain things. And I have my property rights, which they do, but you don't have a right to be a detriment to your neighborhood.
Correct.
And that's what this is. So I, I don't know if you can, you know, bring these pictures in and show, you, you gotta work it out with the, the legal part of our town. But I think it's important that people see this stuff.
People recognize what you're seeing.
This is what you're not talking about, some guy that didn't cut his lawn for three weeks.
Right.
Right, and, and you gotta, again, that's where it's gonna go sometimes, but if you say, this is what we're talking about, I don't think any reasonable person's gonna say, uh, well, we can't, you know, we're gonna vote against this.
For example, the bank, the old bank here, we tried for what, three weeks, tried to find, literally find the actual owner of that bank. We tried, Tony, myself and Mary, we tried and, um, come to find out, we were able to get a lawyer contacted us, we called so many people, someone actually said they are the owner and they called us back, a lawyer called us from Washington DC who's representing the property. And, uh, we were able to finally, finally to get it to be a landscaper, they actually cleared it, I believe, this afternoon, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, this afternoon. So, so it's the process, it's time, you know, um, who do we send the ticket to, who's, who, it's not abandoned because there's a building permit on it, they were actively working in it within the last two weeks, so according to the general bylaw, under the, under the, um, registered maintenance of a vacant property, it's not vacant, it's not abandoned, but it just, it looks bad. So that's where you add the nuisance and the blight.
So people in town think that's gonna be a great place for a Chick-fil-A. So that's the type of stuff we have to listen to.
Yeah, I, I encourage, I encourage the change and I encourage getting it back to the general bylaw and out of the, uh, zoning.
Right.
We don't, we don't zone blight anywhere. I mean, we're constantly trying to upgrade the buildings that come into town.
So Chairman and members, thank you very much.
I have one question.
Nice meeting you.
So, um, I'm a hundred percent advocate for getting rid of blight and nuisance and whatever. Question that came to mind when, when Norm mentioned the, um, uh, like a diesel truck in your neighbor's yard. The only question I have about that is, you know, what, what do we do in the case of somebody is an owner operator? They, they, you know, own a house, they live there, but their business is driving truck.
Correct.
And they don't have any other place, you know, to park it. I mean, is there, is there a way to, um, somehow permit that, you know, maybe?
You'd have to set a limit of the, the vehicle weight, the vehicle weight. So is, is it one ton, which is usually, it's usually ten thousand and one pound, the GVW? That brings it into the DOT class, you need a medical card, a physical, that brings it into the DOT. Well, these newer vehicles, newer trucks, they're actually getting higher in the GVW, but they're more of a resident, more of a homeowner type use. The, the term dual rear wheel, the dual axle, that's usually into the one ton. That could be discussed too. You're gonna get those complaints, the neighbor's starting his diesel truck at four in the morning to warm it up, he doesn't leave till five. I've heard those complaints before and it's a commercial vehicle. I've had, heard those complaints and usually that would go to, to the police department as a noise complaint. So if you, you are at that max, I mean, I've seen oil trucks parked in driveways from oil companies, big oil rigs, those are way over the GVW, but it's there every day.
Years ago, they used to allow school buses.
In some towns they still do, some towns they still do.
Okay, well, thank you very much, we'll, we'll, we'll encourage, we'll encourage it at the town meeting. I, I, I think it, I think someone's gotta set an example, it looks like it's going the wrong way.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just two more things, um, three, I guess, uh, Mr. Chairman. So for the next meeting, uh, we will have a public hearing for two seventy-five Main Street, the Bed and Breakfast. Earlier this week, my apologies, last week, we had a technical review for the project across from the police station. An applicant came in at the last meeting for the auto facility, auto repair facility. We did have a technical review meeting, um, last Tuesday, um, well attended and the, the tenant will be preparing a, a site plan, has been working with all the departments collaboratively, so at some point, they will come back with their submission to the board. And last is, and I know, Mr. Chairman, we spoke briefly prior to the meeting, but we've received a request from Public Access if we could, um, change our Monday schedules from the second and fourth to the first and third, same time, same place. The reason is to, um, with limited crew and, and requirements to record, they are trying to find some flexibility in staffing.
Yeah, I, it seems to me it's been a long time going that the school committee meets at the same time we do. And I remember the old Oxford Access, the guy was running back and forth each thing. I have no problem, I like Mondays, personally I like Mondays, okay? I don't care if it's the second or fourth or the first and the third, it doesn't matter to me.
That doesn't matter, yeah.
Doesn't matter to me.
I like the Mondays too.
Yeah, leave it Monday. That'll work, Tony, if we leave it Monday, but we go to second and fourth?
Yes, um, first and third.
First and third.
Will we get more money?
Yes.
You will?
Yeah, well, you'll be just as well paid as you are now.
I'm all for it.
I don't know how that affects.
Maybe we should add the others.
Like, uh, holidays? That has a bigger impact on holidays for the planning board? I said, I thought the second and fourth didn't affect a lot of them. I know you, you, someone should do an analysis if we're gonna lose four of them because, you know?
Well, September, for instance, the first Monday is Labor Day.
Yeah, see, that's, that's the trouble with first and third. Second and fourth work better in that regard.
Yeah, um, Columbus Day, we always ran into.
Yeah.
On the second Monday.
Yeah, that's about the only one.
Rich, should we run up by the other three members too and make sure they're okay with it or not?
Yeah, I thought we should wait till we got, got a bigger board in here, maybe next meeting we can bring it up again.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But include it in their package so that they can think about it. And the reason why.
Absolutely.
I, I understand that it's hard, difficult to tape two things at the same time.
The other thing with the first Monday, if I may say, is, um, Board of Health always meets on the first Monday of every month. So it could coincide with Board of Health meetings.
We had it tonight, which was the second, right?
Right, and now Board of Health meetings, I believe, are televised or?
Yeah, they were, he was televising.
They were on television.
Whereas they never were before, so the Board of Health would be using this room. Whereas they never were before, so the Board of Health would be using this room.
Which they did tonight.
Right.
They, they went till 6:30.
Oh, geez.
You know?
And if it goes over, then what do you do?
I don't know.
That's, that's something to consider.
Can we meet a different night? Maybe, I don't know. I don't know how too nay are on Mondays, but.
Okay, well, we'll do a mock-up schedule.
Yeah.
And like I said, it was, as mentioned, it was a request from Public Access.
It used to meet on a different day. I forget what day it was.
I think it was Wednesday. I think it was Wednesday.
It used to be, it used to be in the middle of the week sometime.